Okay. Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Trustees' regular meeting number 2021-03. It's February 9th, 2021. It is 7:30 PM on the dot. We're upstairs in the Village Hall Auditorium, and we have Deanna taking our notes today. Our village clerk is not able to attend. Please take the roll.
President Berry?
Here.
Trustee Vorderer?
Here.
Trustee Mallow?
Here.
Trustee Stalker?
Here.
Trustee Olenichek?
Here.
Trustee Desmond?
Here.
Trustee Phelan?
Yeah, Trustee Phelan will not be able to attend this evening. Thank you.
You have a form.
Would folks rise for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America, the individual public or which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm told we have no public comments. One moment, please. Thank you, Tom. We need a motion, please, to let Trustee Stalker participate by phone.
Motion made.
Thank you. Trustee Vorderer made that motion. Do we have a second? Trustee Desmond, thank you. Any discussion? Call that vote, please.
Trustee Vorderer?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker? I'm sorry. Sorry. Trustee Olenichek?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public comments? I'm told we have no public comments. Item four is conflict of interest disclosure. Does anyone have a conflict to disclose with any item on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we're going to move on to item five, approval of the meeting minutes for the closed meeting minutes 2020-09, dated November 10th, 2020. May have a motion on number five, please.
Motion approved, ma'am.
Thank you. Trustee Vorderer is our motion, seconded by Trustee Olenichek. Any discussion here? Take the vote.
Trustee Vorderer?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yeah.
Trustee Olenichek?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. Item six, approval of the meeting minutes for the closed meeting minutes 2021-01, dated January 12th, 2021. May have a motion on seven, please.
I make the motion.
Thank you. Trustee Desmond made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, that was Trustee Olenichek. Thank you. Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Trustee Vorderer?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yeah.
Trustee Olenichek?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
And carries.
Thank you. New business by village trustees. District one, Trustee Desmond.
I have no new business other than to commend our public works for again, doing a great job with the recent snowstorm.
Thank you. District two.
Yeah, I don't know if other trustees have had a lot of questions about the COVID shots in being able to get vaccinated in the Village of Oklaun. I've talked to Trustee Desmond, Trustee Phelan, Trustee Mallow. I'm sure Trustee Vorderer and the mayor and Trustee Stalker have all had the same type of question from constituents asking, when is Oklaun going to get some type of direction on where our citizens can go for getting their vaccination for COVID? So I really wasn't getting any clear direction. I do know that I talked to Dr. Mike Riordan, superintendent from Oklaun High School, and he said that they had contacted their state board of education and volunteered, they're one of five schools, to volunteer their facilities with some help to be able to start putting in plan, emotional plan, to get the immunization set up at Oklaun High School. But there's really been no direction from the state. So I talked to Trustee, or I'm sorry, State Representative Burke, Kelly Burke, and State Representative Flowers, and they said right now, coming down from the state, there's a high need for the vaccinations with low quantity, and that they were going to be getting back to us with what they can find out, and that was as of yesterday. And then I did put a call into Commissioner John Daley, and he said that the Village of Oklaun has been looked at. Oklaun High School is one of the points that they've looked at, and then they've also looked at the pavilion. But that being said, there really isn't a set plan or direction coming down from the state right now as how this is going to happen. And it's a little frustrating. I understand that there are many senior citizens, like my neighbor, Mr. Bobber, who is not, he's able to get onto the internet, and he was able to make an appointment, which was the first one. They ran out of the immunizations, and then he was able to get on. And to make a long story short, him and his wife were able to drive somewhere in the city and be able to get their first shot. But they're concerned about getting the second shot. I know talking with Trustee Phelan, he said that Richards High School also would make their facility available. And I know that there's been some discussion with staff on what the village could or couldn't do. And looking at where the Village of Oklaun is, especially having Christ Hospital in the center of Oklaun, and then looking at logistically where the Village of Oklaun is with 95th Street, Southwest Highway, you've got major thoroughfares coming through the village. I am asking for help and direction from the state to give our staff help and direction. That, yes, we know that there's big need, but there's little amount of shots available. But at some point, the distribution of them is going to open up, and we need to have a forward-looking plan, logistically, to say to our residents that this is where we're looking to put it in. Once we are able to get it green-lighted and get it up and going, this is how we're going to move forward with it. And then we have to take a look at the resources. We are going to need to look at some type of refrigeration, because all the major shots do have some type of refrigeration that we're going to need. And we're going to need some help. And I know that, you know, in Tinley Park, they opened up the convention center, and they actually continue to run out of the amount of shots that they're getting, because the state distributes to the county, and the county is the one that distributes out to the different immunization stations. I will tell you that in conversation with the hospital, not getting clear direction from them. So I would like to work with this board and with our staff to provide some moving-forward plan based off of what we can get from our state representatives and our county representatives to start putting forth a plan, whether it's 30 or 60 days out, of how we're going to give direction to our citizens. And again, most citizens that are in the high need don't have a lot of modern technology to give them guidance. And I know that the majority of the questions I'm getting are from nieces, nephews, you know, sons, daughters, of how they can get their parents their immunization. So I don't know. Trustee Vorderer, have you been able to get in contact with the hospital, find out what their plan is?
Alex, I got a call from my private Oklaun doctor today. They are getting doses of the vaccine by the end of the week. So it is in the private medical sector right now, okay? So I think what, this is going to open up pretty quick here to where these shots will become much more available. But we have got communication from Rich from the hospital. And Advocate does get a certain amount of doses. They said 3,000 doses, which doesn't go very far when you talk about a population. And it's spread out through the entire Advocate system. Actually, I'm a little disappointed with Christ Hospital not having a plan in place as of today. But I'm very hopeful with my own personal doctor telling me that local medical doctors are going to be getting the medicine here by the end. So we'll see by our next board meeting where we're at.
So I'd like to comment. You know, right now, the limiting factor is the number of vaccines available, and this was not flowing. And it is very hard to schedule appointments if you don't know what's coming in. So I think the hospital said they had 3,000. They were expecting another 3,000 this week. And it's very frustrating, because unless you're in their network, you can't access that. So if someone who, you know, is just trying to, you know, get vaccinated, it's very, very frustrating. You're really dependent on the county. I think in the short term, it's the shortage of vaccines. But in the long term, it's going to be there's not enough people doing the vaccine. So I welcome and support any plan we can have in place. But frankly, unless the county is on board with it, you know, and will commit to it, it's going to be very challenging to get it done. I know, I know we've been, you know, trying to talk on behalf of our schools. We've been, you know, fighting to get the nursing homes to get vaccinated. And presently, anyone who wants a vaccine at a nursing home has it. But not all healthcare providers, not all Group 1A people have it. It's a big problem.
Yeah, and that to me is, and I'm glad you brought up the hospital, because it clearly states in the press release that if you are in the Advocate group, then you get priority for the immunization. And I got to be honest with you, that bothers me a little bit, especially when we have so many seniors in the Village of Oklaun that are in need. And then you go to the next tier of people who are high-risk that have underlying medical conditions. So I think that that's something that we need to address. But even further from there, Madam Mayor, you brought up a great point. It's when the vaccines start coming available. And read everything that all the major manufacturers have doubled and tripled their shifts and are starting to produce more. So I think being the Village of Oklaun, and where we're at centrally located, not just the city of Chicago, but the southwest suburbs, I think we need to take the lead and put together a progressive plan to which we can now go public with. As soon as we start getting distribution, here's where we're going to be going at. And here are the people that are going to be targeted for it. And here's how you can get in line to get that distribution. I know that our staff does a wonderful job, and I believe our fire chief has experience from your military side that you would be a perfect lead to be able to help push this together. And I know that, I've not talked to you about this, but in the past, we've talked about other things. Is this something that you and your staff, working with the police department, could work together to get taken care of?
Absolutely. We could definitely do it if the vaccines were available.
So the other issue, you know, when you talk about the hospital, you know, they are a nonprofit hospital. You know, they should be giving back to the community. And to have, you know, something so vital to this community, not only for the health of all the residents, but the economic stability of everything, to have that kind of held back just for, you know, paying customers, I found that a little bit shocking. You know, Oklaun is a good location for a mass vaccination center. We have a statistically higher population of seniors than most communities in our area. Why should seniors have to drive far? The very population, you should be serving in their own community. They have to go outside the community for. It's very, very frustrating, so.
Yeah, and the final thing I want to add on is, this isn't something that we, as a board and village, have talked about. We've been talking about this for well over two months. And I think now is time to put together an actionable plan, using our staff, using our other elected officials, starting with the state, because they control the distribution, then going to the county, and then coming locally. But, you know, this is a time where we need to be committed and not let bureaucracy, excuses, or political connections keep our residents from being able to get their vaccinations. So I look forward to working with our staff and in the distribution of it. And I was very impressed that all of our elected officials were able to get back with us. But the one thing that is concerning me is that the information that they're getting, you would think, would be a lot clearer. And the state is not giving clear direction at this point. So we need to work with that.
Trustee Desmond, you were going to comment?
I just had a question. You seem to be, have some knowledge of Christ Hospital and the vaccinations. Where are they? Are they getting their vaccinations from the county to state?
So they're considered a regional distribution hub. It's my understanding. And so their medical, I believe it's their emergency room nurse, Swice, I believe is her name. Zach, do you know her title official?
Rhonda, she's in charge of pharmacy.
No, there's...
You're talking about Sue Heck, I believe, Mayor.
No, not Sue Heck, Swice.
Rhonda Swice.
Rhonda Swice.
Rhola Swice?
Rhola, Rhola.
Rhola, Rhola.
Yeah. So she's kind of coordinating the regional in the Southland. But, you know, Oklaun is not part of that plan.
Well, that was my next question. I mean, if they're in charge of regional distribution, and people, they're based in Oklaun, and Oklaun can't go to Christ Hospital and get vaccinations. Is there, you know, down the road, do you, can you see? Or, I mean, I'm not putting you on the spot, because obviously, you know, no more than the rest of us.
Bring it.
But is it something, like Alex alluded to with her fire chief, we can just do it ourselves? We have the personnel?
We, because the vaccine comes from the county, it's at the county's discretion who gets those. Now, we have long and deep relationships going back to these health organizations, both on the state and the county level, through our EOC. We've conducted, in this community, I think we're one of the only ones in the state that have conducted a mass drug distribution table topic.
Yes, we can get the vaccinations.
We have our military fire chief, but we also have our EOC director, who is a retired Marine Colonel. We have people who can do this and have done it in Oklaun. So we're ready to go.
Yeah.
I mean, all we need is the okay, and, you know.
Vaccine.
Yeah. But again, the limiting factor, once the vaccine opens up, it's going to be how many people can be doing injections. Because if you do the math, you've got 12 million people who need two vaccines. Each one takes 20 minutes. Do the math. It's going to be, it's going to be a while. So people need to hunker down, be patient, but keep pressing for answers on this, because it is, it is critical, so.
Yeah, but the final thing I want to say, as far as where we're at, logistically, we can hit Chicago, Evergreen Park, hometown, Burbank, Chicago Ridge, Palis, Hickory Hills. We can go on with the amount of communities that we can hit centrally located. We're in the right distribution place to be able to do this. So we've all talked about that the state is the one that handles the distribution to the county, and the county is the one that will handle the distribution out to the other areas. And I think that it's good that Christ Hospital is a regional distribution hub, which would make it better, because then they can keep it in a refrigerated area and then possibly pawn off to another distribution facility or an immunization site. The point is, nobody has a plan. We need to put together the plan. We're all waiting for it, and we all know it relies upon...
I think we could get a plan immediately if we get, I mean, everyone wants to get this done. It's just a matter of getting the vaccine. If we can get that, we have a group of...
Saying that we need, the vaccine is A number one. But don't you have to set up an area? Get security for that? Make sure you have the right refrigeration in it? Then traffic control? There's a lot of other stuff that we could start doing a week, two weeks, three weeks out, working with the police department for that. And then when it comes to immunization, I know that the Village of Oklaun has...
I think we've been doing that, Alex. I think...
I don't, I'm not quite sure. Do we have, have we identified a location in the Village of Oklaun for a distribution?
We have, Alex. We've actually offered the county to use bottom motion, the location that the village purchased a while ago to redevelop. We've been exploring with the county and the state. We've sent multiple messages to them, offering that we could have that location.
Randy, I know that we've sent multiple messages, but we don't have a solid design of saying, this is where we're going to do it.
Could you speak into the microphone, please? Everyone can hear, especially Trustee Stalker.
We put together two plans that we presented to the county. One was where Oklaun High School, and the other one was actually at Moraine Valley Community College, due to the fact that, when I believe when they first looked at Oklaun, they said it wasn't big enough. And I believe that's the reason why they went with Tinley, because it was such a bigger building. The two that we presented to them were Oklaun High School and Moraine Valley Community College. And Commander Clark put two plans together and proposed them both to the county. And I believe as yet, they either shut them down or said they'd get back to us.
Right, so we put together proposal, but we don't have a solid plan that's blessed by the county, that's blessed by the state yet. Because I know that in talking to Commissioner Daley, he brought up the pavilion, which I think the pavilion is a very nice, open area. And he was going to be talking to our director over at Park District.
But the plan is, it's not that our plans aren't getting approved. It's their vaccine, and then they run the nurses that run the injections, so.
I understand that we're trying to move forward, but we're stymied because it's hurry up and wait. And my point being is, we need somebody to give a direction saying, you and the Village of Oklaun are blessed. Here's the area that we feel comfortable with. Start putting everything in motion so when the vaccines come in, we have an actionable plan that we can start distributing vaccines.
And we gave them two sites, and they said no.
I get it.
We'll keep pressing, Alex. And I don't think it's lack of planning on our part. It's strictly...
I believe it's lack of direction from the state, and I think it's lack of direction from the county. Please don't misunderstand me on that. And I will tell you that I do believe that the hospital has not given us any type of clear direction when they're a major distribution hub, and they're not even saying what they can do or can't do for us. So there's some things we have to get taken care of. But we owe it to the citizens.
Yeah, I agree. I just want to, you know, piggyback on what you were saying with one more thing. I just want to thank our schools and our community partners, who whenever we floated ideas, they're like, yeah, yeah. Oklaun High School in particular. You know, whatever they can do, because they recognize that the only way we're going to get our lives back is to get these vaccines in as many arms as quickly as we can. And so, you know, I want to give a shout out to them for being such, such good partners in the community, so.
What makes Oklaun, Oklaun is, many, many nurses have said, I will volunteer time, because I know it's going to take people and resource.
Right, right.
So I look forward to, we need to press the state and the county to give us direction so we can put an actionable plan. And it's going to have to, probably 30, 60 days, but we have to start doing something now. And I'm not blaming staff. I think staff has done a good job. I am concerned with not getting clear direction from the state and from the county.
And the hospital, you know, said that they were limited with the number of staff they have who could be doing this, and in particular, the non-medical staff. So like the clerical people. And I said, well, if you need volunteers, we'll put a call out, and Oklaun will respond. I have no doubt that if they said, I need 50 people to give four hours, like, we could do that in a very brief amount of time. You know, you think of the efforts to get the polio vaccine done, you know, back in the day. We can, we can do that and more. We just have to work together, and, you know, we all agree, it's got to get done.
All right. That concludes my report. Thank you.
My question would be, my question, Mayor, would be, Tinley Park, as Chief Vittorio said, was chosen to give these vaccines out? What's disappointing is when Trustee Olenichek said that certain insurances can't get it. So you're, would you be allowed to get this shot at the convention center if you didn't have the correct insurance?
So county, the county facilities, Tinley Park is one. And if you go to the vaccination website, there are many, probably a couple dozen, maybe thereabouts. All of those, you don't have to have anything. You can just show up with your appointment.
But here within Oklaun, you need to have the correct insurance to be able to get.
So if it's, if you're going through the county, you don't need insurance, you don't need any hospital affiliation. But if you're going through the hospital, they are, they are holding presently the doses they have for their high-risk patients. And I imagine what they're doing is, you know, someone who's going there with cancer, their very oldest, most vulnerable, you know, they're, I don't know their criteria, but, you know, it's, it's...
So what we're looking...
Nobody knows their criteria, because they keep it to themselves. They're very upfront, saying that it is only people in the Advocate system that will get those shots.
But that's just one, one site, okay? There are many, many sites. The majority of sites, you know, like Trustee Vorderer said, his doctor is not affiliated with Advocate, are they?
No.
So it's a separate group. And as, as these groups get access, they're going to distribute it. So I called my doctor, and I said, hey, you know, are you, do you have a list or something? How do people get on the list? And they said, please don't call us. We have no control over it. So, and my doctor is affiliated with the hospital. So I have no idea what to, what to tell people other than try the county sites. The county does open up appointments as they get the vaccine coming, but it's very, very, very hard to get through. I've tried at 6:00 AM, I've tried at 2:00 in the morning, I've tried in the afternoon. I hear stories, try this time, try that time, you know? But it's hard, hard to get an appointment.
It's like the unemployment.
So District three, any news?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I had was in regards to the 2021 tax bill, just for our residents to understand that the bill is due on March 2nd, but they're foregoing penalties until May 3rd. I just wanted to make sure everybody kind of knew that. And that's about all I have. Thank you.
Very good news. District four.
Yes, Mayor, I'm happy to announce that Amazon Foods, 95th and Pulaski, will be opening on Thursday, February 11th. The last board meeting, we were all kind of upset about the constant, constant delays, maybe screaming and hollering. Did some good, I'd like to think. But, so I'm looking forward to that store and their unique concept on how to shop. And, you know, we've been going through some pretty hard weather here. Got another two weeks of severe cold weather. Make sure you bundle up, check on your elderly neighbors, and stay warm. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. District five, Trustee Stalker.
Just a moment, please. I'm going to get you closer to the mic. Okay, let's try that.
Okay. There's somebody you know, but many people don't know. Brian Hannigan, our chief financial officer in the village, is leaving after about 14 years of service. He came to us from Bruton Loom, where he was also chief financial officer, during a time when Bruton Loom decided to take all their production overseas. It turned out to be a fiasco for the corporation. They couldn't get distribution and production out of their vendors. Brian Hannigan was capable of getting them into bankruptcy and out of it to keep the company from going bankrupt. I know it doesn't sound good to be able to bring a company into bankruptcy, but it protected the company, so they continue to exist today. He has been a member of St. Linus, and I've known him for over 20 years, and that's how I met him. He has been an asset to the village of Oklawn, and I want to wish him a great deal of walking success in his new endeavors, and I'm personally sorry to see him leave. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee Stalker. Okay. Very nice. Yeah, Brian will be missed. He worked really hard for this village, and I, yeah, and I, anything I, any time I needed, any kind of detail, boom, there it was, whether it was Sunday morning, or, you know, Friday night, or 9:00 AM, or 6:30 AM, I, I really appreciate that, that detail, so, and his, his can-do attitude. Okay. Yes, we wish him the best. Village managers' report, Randy.
No report, Mayor, but I would like to also echo what everybody's saying about Brian Hannigan. Quality individual, always willing to stay to get the job done, was my right-hand man through the last year. I could safely say that there's no way I could have done it without him. So, thank you, Brian. Good luck. Godspeed.
Yeah. Well said, well said, Randy. Okay, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine and have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item 10A is a request to approve the People's Review Board referral for a 20-foot yard variation and a variation to allow a seven-foot-tall chain-link fence with barbed wire at 9120 South Colmer. This was a 6-0 vote to approve. Pete Lenoski was the petitioner in District two, and B is ordinance granting that request. C is a request of the Board of Trustees' approval and direction to the Board of the Fire and Police Commission to hire one police officer from the current eligibility list due to retirement. Then we have D, the request of the Board of Trustees' approval and direction to the Board of the Fire and Police Commission to hire one firefighter paramedic from the current eligibility list due to retirement, and a request to promote one lieutenant and one engineer due to the same retirement of a lieutenant. May have a motion, please, on 10. Trustee Mallow made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Desmond. Any discussion? Let's call the vote, please.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olanichek?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
And passes.
Thank you. 11 is Resolution 210308, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a squad car laptop computers, excuse me, of squad car laptop computers from CDS Office Technologies, utilizing equitable funds by the Village of Oklawn Police Department. May have a motion on 11.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Trustee Boarder made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Mallow. Any discussion? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olanichek?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
And carries.
Thank you. And Deanne, are you comfortable doing the village clerk's report?
Sure.
Okay, we have item 12, 12A. Go ahead.
Okay, approval of semi-monthly discursments, number 2021-03D, dated February 9, 2021, in the amount of $5,683,364.95.
Thank you very much. May have a motion on 12A, please.
Motion to pay the bill.
Thank you. Trustee Boarder made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Desmond is our second. Thank you. Any discussion? Let's call that vote, please.
Trustee Boarder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olanichek?
Yes.